We all stand and pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America. To the republic which stands in the nation's accord, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you everyone for being here. We need to open our meeting.
Okay.
As do we.
As do we.
Okay.
This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We're meeting in the downstairs meeting room and it's six oh five.
And this is a meeting of the dieting planning board. Same place, same time.
As well as the board of selectmen. Six oh six.
Oh yeah, sure was all up with that one minute.
You guys talk too slow.
Very well, we'll get started. Thank you everyone for being here, you'll have to bear with me, I'm uh I've been infected by the wonderful Tom Ferry as he's done with everybody at town hall. I put this down on paper because I wanted to stay on point and I'm amped up on Nyquil and whatever else I can take, so bear with me. Board members and citizens of Dayton, this meeting was called to discuss the apparent disconnect in taxpayer services that has become ever more prevalent over the last several years. With most of the current developments in town. The intention is not to moderate this event, my intention is not to moderate this event, but instead present this opening statement and initiate discussion between the three governing bodies responsible for the direction of all development within Dayton. Which happens to be one of the fastest growing places in Bristol County. These words should not be construed as an attempt to suggest that we are not doing our very best to ensure compliance and cohesiveness within our neighborhoods, new and old. But instead, I hope that we can discuss what works and what truly doesn't. Everyone in this room knows that I will be the first to step up to the plate when faced with a problem and the last to walk away when things get difficult or adversarial. So I encourage all of us to take the time to recognize that we have some concerns that need addressing. Not for the betterment of one, but for instead for all. We are responsible for one of the most important and complex tasks any town can face, sustainable growth. Sustainable growth means many things, but most importantly, it means embracing the unprecedented amount of people flocking to Dayton while ensuring taxes stay manageable and services are available to all who call this town home. With a three hundred year history, that task can be daunting. But it's the same people and values who have endured the test of time that can ensure the groundwork is laid out for the next three hundred. Over the past several years, it has become quite apparent that developers have put their priorities elsewhere. Dayton's governmental body has made significant strides with subdivisions to ensure compliance with your board's permitting. And those permits themselves have evolved with each new subdivision as we have all worked collectively to do what's best for Dayton. But dealing with irresponsible developers has come at a cost. It has taxed town officials and departments in times of need and has created frustration for the very townspeople drawn here for a great life. Basic taxpayer services like snow plowing, rubbish disposal, grass mowing, and the like have not happened systematically for our newest residents. I can refer to many examples, but one in particular stands out. During a snowstorm this year, I received a call from a new Dayton resident, the caller started by saying how sorry they were for bothering me at night, but had exhausted all their options. He asked me for the following. Is there any way we can get our road plowed? I have called all contacts for the developer and have come up empty handed. I don't know where else to turn. My wife has been working since before the storm and she is finally going to be able to leave the hospital tonight at midnight. But I'm afraid when she gets to our street, she will not be able to come home. Before I tell you my response, let me allow you into my world for a moment. I'm very good at extrapolating rural events from very, excuse me, very few words. So you can imagine after hearing what I did, my blood pressure became slightly elevated and yes, I bounced off the ceiling a few times. I asked, why should a resident have to pace the front windows of his home hoping a developer will show just so his wife, whom by the way, has been out assisting accident vehicle victims and other sick individuals for twelve hours or more, be able to make it home? All this just because the developer thought it was unimportant to respond? Did he or she think Dayton wasn't important when they cashed their closing check? I think not. I told the homeowner that I was sorry for his frustration and asked that he tell his wife to drive home carefully and not to worry, her street will be plowed when she arrives. I then called Tom Ferry and as usual, he responded within minutes of that request. Now this is just one example, but as a few in this room can attest, it's not isolated. I've heard from many, including developers, how this is a developer's responsibility and we shouldn't be so concerned. Tell that to a homeowner who chose Dayton as a place to live because of the great schools and superb public services. I pull every new Dightonium when I have the chance and ask what brought them here? Schools, services, and we're just far enough away from everything else of the top three vote getters. Also, none of the complaints that I'm aware of have ever been trivial, frivolous, or about living in an active construction zone. As you all know, we have worked on the geography, excuse me, the geography as allowed to build out subdivisions in a way that reduces construction impacts on occupied homes. Another issue that I think we fully haven't realized is the impact of homeowners associations. The intention of this model is to reduce impacts of the development on cities and towns. But I think there are many in this room, including myself, that will tell you we have only just begun to see the impacts of HOAs. Do we really think the homeowners are going to maintain the various items needed to keep things rolling along? If you ask some of the people who feel some of the calls coming into town hall from new residents, I don't think many of these homeowners reel the magnitude of their responsibilities if they know them at all. Snow plowing, including sidewalks, catch basins, storm drainage, communal septic, roadways, repairs, et cetera, et cetera, the list goes on and on. Do we really think those things, if applicable, will actually get done without the town's intervention? Or this, excuse me, or is this just a bill of goods sold to us by developers and attorneys manipulating the system? You must remember, we're in New England, not in a steamy subdivision in somewhere in Florida. Where more of half of its residents do nothing more than play golf and make sure homeowner covenants are adhered to. I myself owned a house for ten years in one of them. I can attest that the elders of the community love to tell you when you weren't following the rules. Try knocking on your neighbor's door in New England to tell them you don't like what they are doing at their home. Good luck with that. I have some ideas that I hope to share with you tonight as we proceed with this discussion. I don't suggest that I have all the answers and don't profess or possess to have the ability to formulate the solutions if we deem as a whole that they're needed. But collectively as a team, I think we have the knowledge and the foresight to meet the task in front of us. So I ask everyone in this room, are we doing enough to ensure that all Dayton residents are serviced properly and live the same quality of life as other neighbors in town? And are we doing enough to make sure Dayton will be sustainable as it's been in the past? Thank you for your time and I look forward to an open discussion.
Jim, who is that? Are you referring to which development do we get plowed?
It was Mayor Slane.
Which is in which development?
It's a planning board. But they all have a history of not being plowed.
Across the street.
Every one of them has.
A prime example.
Right. We've seen these issues with every single subdivision in town.
Right. The um one of the we've had this exact conversation, I don't know five, six dozen times, you and I in your office or down here. One of them being whether you're overworked or the pop, there's so many problems with forty Bs that some of them become so miniscule that we can't hold your feet to the fire. And how many times have I said to you, Jim, there's this issue and you've told me I can't get to it? No fault of yours, but they become so miniscule. The planning board I'm sure is going to say the same thing. We work two and a half, sometimes three years putting together forty Bs. And the books that come out can be, can be two and a half, this list full of forty B regulations that we've spent two and a half, three, three years negotiating. And to have builders just dismiss three quarters of those things. I'm gonna be, not to offend anybody, pisses me off. Sorry, who's ever watching. I think the board's gonna feel the same way, probably your board will feel the same way. When we, when I drive through those subdivisions and see even things like no parking signs that don't go up, seeing fence around detention basins that not, that don't go up, as that ride that we took, what, just two months ago, three months ago, when it was, the detention base hadn't been even plowed since the beginning of that subdivision four or five years ago, when it was clearly in the book that it was supposed to be done twice during the, twice a month during the season. I remember sitting on that board and going through the subdivision with that developer. I remember with him sitting here calling me all kinds of names and then going up to Dean and arguing over a four hundred fifty dollar plowing bill because the town had to go in and plow his subdivision. And he said, well, I was gonna wait till the snowstorm stopped and you guys beat me like forty, forty-five minutes. Well, that wasn't the way it played out, but it was the way he wanted to play it in front of Dean. And saying that the zoning board was out of control. There's gotta be more authority than just you. And I even volunteered to you to, to take over or assist you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
There's what?
The snow.
No.
Assist you on that behalf, at least with the zoning issues. Because I don't think anybody knows it better than the gentleman sitting here at the table that have put together these subdivision, these forty Bs. Because we've all worked them, we've all spent hours and hours and hours, I think, I don't know Kenny, what's it, two thousand hours maybe, a thousand hours collectively? Now, we have the gentleman across the street who's going to come back, well, who was sitting at the meeting the other night, who's gonna come back and wants to rework his whole subdivision rules, forty B rules.
Right, I hear everything you're saying and I don't deny your comments. I think there's two problems, I think one of them is, you said it yourself, that the developer himself said that he was gonna wait till the snow stopped. Well, as a public works director, he can tell you, he doesn't plow when the snow stops, he's plowing when the minute the snow hits the ground. So, there's actually an easy solution to the snow plowing problem, it's quite simple. Tom Ferry has a truck in every sector that we own, that we have a subdivision being built out on. If Tom Ferry drives by a subdivision and he can determine what the amount is, let's call it four inches for argument's sake right now, and he drives by, or one of his workers, the DPW workers drive by and it isn't plowed, the next time by, he plows it. It's automatic. You now as a developer have lost your opportunity to plow that subdivision. As long as I have a Dayton resident with an occupancy permit there, then there's a responsibility to keep that road clear.
That's, that's great, but the answer, no, it's not, it's not just do it. But in all fairness to the ZBA, we sent out a letter when we stopped negotiating everything from the very beginning. We can't say to everybody at every second, there's a meeting, there's a meeting, there's a meeting, it's all posted. And in all fairness to Mr. Perry, Perry, if he doesn't show up to those meetings, we have to say, or we have to continue that you're going to control your own subdivision coming and plowing.
Peter's no in chastising the work that you've done, we're just saying that it's not working.
I'm not saying you're chastising, Jim, I think you're looking for the boards to get together and come up with some rule.
That's right. That's right.
Or the town to come up with a bylaw that specifies, or whatever it's gonna do.
It can, this kind of stuff, and Lisa can correct me, can be written right into the comprehensive permits. So that, this is not just one incident.
But what I'm saying is, we can't go back and change them now.
Well, yes, we can though.
You can if you have someone coming for substantial change.
We're coming before the board is asking us for stuff.
Well, if we go any further, these subdivisions, whether they're forty Bs or these gentlemen's formates, whatever, they're privately owned, okay? And I understand that all of these people are entitled when they're paying taxes to forget their snow removal and stuff. But the liability, there's a liability clause, Mr. Ferry sends people in there to do it. There's stuff sticking up out of the ground.
That's a, that's a valid point, go ahead.
The responsibility should be right on the developer and if he doesn't do it, fine him, like he would if it was my, in front of mine.
That's a valid point, but you can't tell me there isn't a way to get over that, okay? There has to be a way.
Well, I know in our forty Bs, we've conditioned them that the responsibility, until the road is accepted by the town and all of them, that the this issue such as cleanup or whatever road repairs.
Yeah, but that's the, but that's the problem, right?
They're not following. They're not following.
They're not doing any, this is me, excuse me, your turn, we'd like to say.
So why don't they come up with some.
That's simple. I'm Lisa Mead, I'm counsel to the planning board and there's just, I might make a suggestion here, because your problem isn't unique. It happens across the Commonwealth and some people address it and some people don't. And this meeting is really fabulous to be able to try and do that, it's actually a layered approach. Because if you have issued a comprehensive permit or the planning board has issued a subdivision approval, your decisions say that they're supposed to keep track, they're supposed to, the place maintains, no plowed and all of that while they remain private and in fact, probably in a comprehensive permit, it will always be private. In a subdivision, there's an opportunity for it to be accepted as a public way. So your decisions say that, the enforcement authority of those decisions is the building inspector.
Right.
So that's one layer, but that's, that only gets you so far. The other thing that you can do is similar to many other communities, just like you require the plow, and I don't know if you do in Dayton, but many communities require that you shovel your sidewalks in front of your house. And if you don't do that, there are some communities that actually have somebody come out and give you a ticket every day, you know, under forty-four fifty-three D. You just get, I mean twenty-one D, you just get a ticket every day. So you can do the same thing, you can adopt a general bylaw that says if there's a private road, it must be snowplowed in order to provide for the safe passage of emergency vehicles in snow emergencies or other kinds of similar emergencies. So then not only do you have the building inspector enforcing a building, I mean a, an issued permit, which may be easy or not easy to enforce depending on what it is, but you also have a general bylaw that can have you start fining somebody who was supposed to be plowing. So I don't think there's one answer to it because you have to have a bunch of different ways to go at it.
So this is, excuse me, you can, if it's a comprehensive permit, you can go not retroactive, but you can, you don't have to open the comprehensive permit and put that in there?
No, 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 you can't add it, so there's layers, okay? So you issue a comprehensive permit moving forward.
So you can't go back and enforce the ones behind it?
Unless you have substantial change.
You can enforce, so here's, if your comprehensive permit says that the applicant, developer, private owner and/or association must maintain the private way.
Which they do.
Okay, so he has a right to enforce that. The question is though, once it's built, right, what is he enforcing? He's enforcing a permit that may have some penalty associated with it, but aside from taking somebody's occupancy permit away, right, it's really tough to enforce a building permit, a comprehensive permit, a subdivision approval, if there's nothing else to take back, right? So you can go and he can issue the, you know, the fines for violating, probably under the zoning bylaw, I believe that he has a right to find things and as the zoning enforcement officer, he could issue fines. But you really want something done. So, once it's issued, the other thing you could have is a general bylaw that says.
Well, I think Peter's alluding to though is where we've already got these permits issued.
Right.
Is where does the responsibility, as the zoning board, the board of appeals.
Right.
We cannot petition ourselves.
No.
The homeowners there would have to come to us and say, look, this isn't being done, am I right?
No, no, not at all, it's the building inspector's responsibility to enforce issued permits.
Not enforce it, but to make the modifications so that we can.
That's what it is. You can't modify it.
No, we can't, but if the, if the people in the subdivision, homeowners association came to us and said, look, this developer's not fulfilling his needs, they could petition us though, because this constitutes a major change, doesn't it?
If they come in for a modification.
Right, like across the street wants to. Modification, like they weren't doing across the street.
It's a negotiation, right.
But that's the developer that's doing that.
You need to plow it and if it gets to four inches, Mr. Ferry's gonna go and he's gonna plow it and you're gonna get the bill.
Right, but that's only if they come to us.
We can't go, right, we can't go.
You can't just say you're gonna. You have to have a bylaw, you have to have a bylaw. Right, you have to have a bylaw that says he's gonna do it and you're gonna pay, you can't just say.
Well, we have all conditions though, you're gonna have your.
No, 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 in the conditions, right, but it's an enforcement issue, the enforcement issue is with the building inspector.
Yes, and why can't he enforce it, we have it as a condition in the forty B that says four inches or more, if you haven't plowed it, then he's gonna contact us. Mr. Ferry's gonna drive by it and send us plows in.
You can do that.
But that's only, that's only if it's an open forty B.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, but it doesn't help us like with Dayton Woods where the guy is not coming before us
Right.
to, to open up anything.
But he is asking to us.
So that's where the bylaw.
That's where.
So we can dieting with Dayton Woods and we can do it with the fines and we can do it with zoning rich, but we can't do it with Dayton Woods.
Because they're asking to reopen.
Dayton Woods is not asking to.
So, so timeout, you, you can't add something that's not there.
Correct.
But if you have in your decision that the developer and it runs, no, in the decision that exists right now, if, if Dayton Woods includes a condition right now that says the developer shall maintain the public way.
Which it does, which it does.
Then the way that's enforced right now is through the building inspector, through the zoning bylaw, which says he has a right to enforce permits that are issued and there are penalties for not doing so. He can, he can, he can issue, he has to issue every day, a ticket every day under forty-four, I mean, excuse me, chapter forty, section twenty-one D. I'm pretty sure you've adopted that, so he would have to issue a ticket every day for a violation of the zoning bylaw.
That may work for snow, for snow plowing sidewalks, but it's not gonna work for a roadway.
No, no, that's why it's, it, that's why it's a multiple level thing. You can adopt, you can adopt a bylaw, you may adopt a bylaw that says you can private roads have to be plowed to allow for safe access.
I have a question, you've mentioned aside from snow plowing, can you also have a bylaw that states that a developer that does not maintain the drainage system, the settlement pond, all that stuff? Can there be a bylaw that holds their feet to the fire?
Well, so those are different, so those are different, because that's not necessarily.
We have problems across the board, yeah, we do.
Right, those are permit enforcement issues. Those are permit enforcement issues.
But the, the subdivision is built, it's done, it's still a private road. There's no more permits to pull, everybody in this subdivision has a CO. Does that mean that there's nothing to enforce?
The.
There's no, there's something to enforce, but there's nothing to extract from the, from the debris.
Well, the developer, the developer would get fined based upon violation of the zoning bylaw, which says he must comply with the permit.
See, the whole, the whole problem here is that the taxpayers who are in these subdivisions are paying the same tax as everybody else. They're driving through town, they're seeing that no one else has these issues except when they get home. And they're making the calls to us, to the selectmen and saying, what say you? Why am I held to a different standard? So there's something broke and I'm not saying that anybody's responsible for it. But we live in a community that people expect a certain level and it's not down here, it's up here. No, and we're not unique, there are other more affluent communities, I'm sure that are doing it better than we are.
Well, not always necessarily so bad.
But we're, we're, we're getting the questions and I'll work till the cows come home, you all know that, I don't mind getting the phone calls. But I'll be damned if I gotta answer a phone call from someone who says, can my wife please run into the driveway when she comes home? That's bull.
Then like, do it and have them bill it, that's the only answer.
But we need to do it, but we need to.
Take a town and handle on that property.
Snow plowing is just one, we got rubbish pickup. We got people throwing trash in the trunks of their cars because they're bringing trash out onto the main street because we won't let the trash trucks into the subdivision because it's still IE private. And then the people on the street are calling us saying, how come my street looks like a dump because I got ninety-nine trash bags at the end of the road? Well, why can't there be a trigger in the permits or through a bylaw or whatever, and that's why we're all here, that says, when I give my first CO to a taxpayer in that subdivision, X, Y, and Z takes place. The trash trucks go in, the snow plow is automatic if you don't do it, and whatever else is a problem.
But are you covered by going on private property with public?
Figure it out, I mean, we gotta figure it out, don't tell me we can't do it.
I don't know.
Jim, how are you crossing the line?
Hold on a minute. How can police and fire go in there on an emergency?
That's emergency personnel.
It doesn't matter, there's still town vehicles.
And there's different kinds of cars.
If the liability isn't gonna fall on the town, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, we, that's what we have attorneys for, can't we figure it out?
Jim, in all of our forty Bs, they, they call for dumpsters until they either the roads are accepted or either they're made public, but until then, the building, I mean, the developer is supposed to have dumpsters. What can we, we can't enforce it, we're not enforcers, so.
We have a condition.
I don't know who is supposed to go there and say, where's the dumpsters? Why they have to buy bags, I don't know. Somebody has to, I've talked to you about it before, where's the importance, where does the level, who's supposed to say, how come you're buying bags?
So if you have dumpsters, but the planning board is allowing trash pickup, we've got two sets of standards going on here, there's no unity.
Right, but we go by the forty B. That's, we go by the forty B standards. What standards they adopt, I don't know, that's why we have, in the forty B, they can get away with having a forty foot frontage as opposed to whatever frontage they allow in a standard subdivision.
That's fine, so, so if what you're saying is true, a dumpster on the site, where does the dumpster go? Does it go into a common area?
In the forty B, that's where it comes to, where it's supposed to be, then it's supposed to be had.
It's on the plans, it's always shown on the plan.
Forty B is a state, that's a state entity, correct?
No, 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 it's based in the permit.
It's negotiated in the forty B.
I don't think it's in the forty B, I think it's trash pickup by the developer, but I don't think it's dumpsters specifically.
If we negotiated forty B with trash pickup, then it's in the forty B.
Trash pickup, yes, but not necessarily dumpsters.
Doesn't say dumpster.
Doesn't say dumpsters, that's what I'm saying.
Like, for example, when we were doing across the.
But he's responsible for trash pickup, whether it be dumpster or trash pickup.
When we were doing the forty B for Sunset Woods, look what, we talked about dumpsters, do you remember this? Who was involved, you were involved, we talked about dumpsters, they were gonna have fences all around them, they had to maintain them, they couldn't pick up until seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, this was clearly written down, all for forty B.
In all of them, Peter, that, the odds are that way, if it's gonna be a road, there's only one that I can think of that isn't.
Excuse me one second.
Number one, trash is board of health.
But more.
Period.
Forty B for all of.
Trash pickup and services is board of health.
Yeah, you're right there, but the permitting is with us.
Now, if there are problems with board of health can override those kind of permitting things if they're considered a health hazard to this community. I don't care if you live on a private street, one thirty-eight or Winfield Lane, trash falls under the board of health, it's a health issue. So I think we need to look at the power that the board of health can have as far as enforcing the trash problem, pickup, whatever. I wanna get back to roads.
You can have the trash problem.
The, I'll take the road problem. What Jim said about emergency vehicles and who can have access to private roads, first of all, nothing in this town will move for anyone if the highway department can't go in. Because if the road is a plowed or it's impassable or whatever, Tommy's gotta go in and plow it because fire and police can't get in there. So it would appear to me that certainly the availability of the street department to go in and open a road, whether it's four inches or whatever the height of snow is, you can't wait for developers to do it, I don't care what's in print because it is now a public safety issue. If the, I mean, the man's wife trying to come home from work is bad enough. By the same token, what we've experienced in this town since I think January is five chimney fires. Now, some of those were when we had snow on the ground and one of them was in a very isolated section in this town which the truck went in and I think had to be backed out with people on each side, that's how narrow the road was, it's an ancient way. But the fact of the matter is, that's one we're looking at to discuss with the residents in that area because we've got to do something. Not only to make sure that they will get services on this ancient way, it's not even a developed road, ancient way. But we've got to assure that public safety can get in there because they're all paying taxes, okay? So, we have border health issues that I think could help with some of the trash problems. We have public safety issues that come first, but before police and fire get there, highway department is gonna have access, period. My other concern is that I'm hearing about stormwater basins not being fenced and not being maintained and about things that have been permitted that have been going on for years. I wanna talk about Richmond Hill. My understanding is this town is holding money from developers. I wanna know why we haven't taken action to take the money that we're holding and spend it on, let's get Richmond Hill fixed, the broken sidewalks, the unfenced catch basins, and by the way, we did meet with them and they gave us our word, they'd take care of it, they left a mess there. And by the way, we did meet with them and they gave us our word, they'd take care of it, they left a mess there in plain English. My understanding is that situation on Richmond Hill, there's some seventeen thousand dollars. It's not gonna take care of everything up there, but let's grab while we can. And if Tommy has to fence and, uh, we have to have people do this work, why don't we take the money we're holding from these developers? And say to them, you need to fix it or we're gonna take that money and we're gonna do it. I wanna know why, is there a legal enforcement issue here?
So is that a subdivision, Richmond Hill?
Uh-huh.
So the, um, they're, under chapter forty one, section eighty one, they have a, the, the planning board has a right to notify the, um, developer that he hasn't completed the improvements the way they were supposed to be completed. And if they, he doesn't do them within a date, within a time certain, that they can apply the money to have the work done. So there is a process that that happens.
Well, and, and my, and, uh, but treating me, my point is, they've tried, we've tried. As recently as last year, we sat down with these developers and told them specifically, you've got a, a basin there that is grown up into trees. You've gotta clear it out and you've gotta fence it.
Yeah.
And you need to adjust the slope of the sides. You've got another one that you're supposed to mow twice a year and maintain it. And part of the problem is the kids are tearing it up with motorbikes, okay? The sidewalks are broken, there's broken lamp posts, this, they assured us they would take care of it. They have, they made a feeble attempt, really feeble, uh, to go up there. They cut down some brush on the first basin, put a fence partway around it and through all the brush they cut out on the side, they didn't fence. So my point is, what is the next step? Because I'm ready to take legal action. As far as I'm concerned, all of you that have dealt with these people that have either sworn at you or told you where to go. If the town is holding money, let's just take the legal action and do it. What, what are we waiting for? I'm fed up with Richmond Hill because I hear from the people up there and I've been up there. And when you sit at a table and the two people involved assure you it's going to be taken care of, they don't respond to letters. I think the only thing left is take the money.
When did this meeting take place?
Uh, last fall time?
Early last fall, late last fall.
Because, uh.
And then the re, the end result, you felt assured or the board felt assured they were gonna complete all these tasks.
And they specifically said, don't touch the seventeen thousand.
And what communication did the board?
In writing.
From them, right?
No, they, we sent the letter, they came in and met with us, we sat upstairs, we had a meeting, we had minutes, the whole thing. They estimated it would take about five thousand dollars to do the catch ba, uh, not catch basins, um, infiltration basins. What we wanted done, because we sent to them. We hear the town's holding seventeen thousand dollars that belongs to you.
Okay, and did we get communications, they had a meeting with the developers and, and that was?
Yes, yes, cause when they didn't, absolutely.
They sent us the letter of the results, they sent us the letter.
Okay.
So, all I wanna know now is how do we get the money, cause nothing else is working?
You have to, I, I, I don't, again, I don't know whether the board has actually sent the notices. We have to, you have to go through the process, send the certified letter saying this is gonna be done, if it's not done by this time, the town's gonna act on the money. So the board needs to do that and then you can have the money. The, the board has to do the, whatever they're supposed to do.
Now, the rest of the story on Richmond Hill is, we can get those infiltration basins, uh, cleaned out, fenced. Uh, we may have to mow ourselves, which means highway department doesn't, there's not enough money to fix the roads, cause they were never finished. And the sidewalks and the broken lamp posts. So if we get the seventeen and fix as much as we can, does this town have legal authority to go in and finish that road sidewalk and then go after the owners? Cause I, I, I'm sick of this, it's just gone on for years.
Are there still undeveloped parcels up there and as a case, can we put leads on the parcels?
Well, they're selling off, they're selling off lots.
Yeah, I believe there's two.
They're not building any, they're just selling lots now.
Do we have covenant on them?
The last two, the last two houses are, are built.
I'm not aware of that.
They're, one of them is still under construction and one of them just gave a CO.
Right, right, right.
And plowing is another issue up there.
They just sold the lot on that.
They did, but the, there are building permits there.
Yeah, but the, none that you can hold back.
No, 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 the lots were all released.
It's a private owner that, that, not the developer.
Yeah, it's not the people buying the lots now, it's the original two.
Right.
Um, and again, when we met with them, don't touch the seventeen, we will personally take care of the rest of it. Meaning the catch basin, excuse me, the infiltration basins, the fencing and all that. They didn't do any of it, cause they said they were gonna use the seventeen to work on the sidewalks, the light posts, the road and all that, okay? Um, but it, it just seems, I understand the frustration of all these boards. And you get the calls or you get sworn at or we get the calls. But the fact of the matter is, if we have money that belongs to them, it's time to do something. Cause it's the only way you're gonna get their attention, so.
Are they still looking for building permits in town, are they still developing and doing?
Are they still developing, yes.
Well, all we gotta do is hold back future building permits.
Well, so, well, no, but it's, not, not, but you can't, if they owe.
On that property, on that development, yes.
On any development.
Under the municipal modernization act, if.
If they got an unfinished development that we have to finish and they owe us money for doing that.
Okay, we legally stop another parcel, but in that development, I think we can. Another, am I, am I correct on that?
So under the municipal modernization act that was passed last year, if they owe any money to the town, essentially, you have a right to pull and or not issue permits, you have to, you have to have a hearing.
We do that, we do that.
Okay, so you have to have a hearing, but you can do that and you can cease giving them permits.
For other, other subdivisions or just?
If they owe the town money, not, so not for the in, not for the not complete subdivision, you have to follow, if you have a bond, if you have a covenant, you have to follow the release of the covenant, the regulations related to completion of the roads and things of that nature. But if they come in to apply for a permit and they owe money for anything else, unpaid taxes, water.
Yeah, we do that. The problem we have with them is, as, again, you know who I'm talking about, they're longtime residents. We're, we're gonna take care of it, don't touch the seventeen, we're gonna do it. The job that was done was not acceptable, they got another letter telling them, that's not what we asked you to do, what you left up there is a mess, okay? And we told them that if it didn't get straightened out, the town would do it and they would get billed. Well, they haven't done it, needless to say, the highway department has a lot of other stuff to deal with. My feeling is, the faster we can take the money from the ones who won't maintain the roads or do the trash or whatever it is, all right? Because if you say, we're not gonna issue any more permits for your next development, they can sit back for years. All the people up there are suffering, those developers aren't suffering, it's the people, the, the taxpayers.
Thirteen years, right, thereabouts?
Oh.
Are those roads all accepted up there?
No, they're complete.
No, no.
We, um.
They don't even have the, the final.
Oh, that's why we're holding their money.
That's why they have money.
Plowing or is it town plowing?
Lisa, on that question of, uh, the owed money.
Tommy, you plow those?
No.
Somebody's plowing them.
If they take, if they take, use the money to, to finish up, the town uses the money to finish up the basins and everything. And then does additional work, can they be given notification, is that any way to, eh?
The town maybe lean the property, the road having not been received and owed, but, um, I, I don't, I don't think you can, because the money supposed, that's held back is supposed to be based upon the estimate of work to be completed. So in the meantime, the, the real, the hammer, but not necessarily in this instance, the hammer is typically the acceptance of the road, right? So we want the road accepted so it's off our backs, cause he should still be paying taxes on the road, right? So we want the road accepted so it's off our backs, so it has to be, it has to meet subdivision standards in for, in order for it to be accepted. So typically, typically, developers will do that so they can get the road accepted.
So is it taxes owed, owed on that road?
Well, I don't know, but he should be getting taxed on the road because he owns that, it's a private road owned by the developer.
Yeah, there's two roads up there.
So that's, that's an interesting question, because that, right.
That would be the thing to kick, to start any other permits.
That's right.
Quite a bit of acreage you've got and all.
No, just the road, but it's, 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 it's the owing the money that you get some leverage against.
How about putting a lien on his personal property if he's a resident?
Uh, it's a company, you'd have to go after the company.
The problem with that particular subdivision is that he sold the lots off.
Bluestone.
So he owed no more lots in the prop, in the subdivision, they were all sold and privately held.
Yeah, yeah, Bluestone property.
So I couldn't withhold any permits.
We, um, obviously, we only handle the, the, the Z B A N, which is the forty Bs. So Richmond Hill is a, a monster all to itself with, we have four very active forty Bs. Um, we have one that's for sale, uh, which would make it a fifth, and a sixth that's coming to a final conclusion, which is the one off of Tremont Street, which will become a very, again, within a year, become an active one for us. The, um, two out of the four are, are pain in our butts. Uh, we'll start with the one that's across the street. Uh, he was at this last meeting and, and he was told by me not to come to this last meeting. Yeah, but I think he got the, he found out that I wasn't going to be here and he took advantage of me not being here. He was told not to come, he has no money in the bank as far as he doesn't have a bond, uh, that we hold. Uh, there's a lot of problems with across the street as Jim is well aware. He didn't even, Jim wasn't even aware that he was going to show up and I don't think the members of the board were aware that he was going to show up. Uh, he owes the taxes, uh, back taxes on, on the property, but we don't have a bond, uh, that we can go after. But he wants to come in and renegotiate, which, um, we are not going to allow to happen. Uh, unless there is a bond that he's willing to put down. And I'm going to tell you right now, there is no money in his kitty to do this. Uh, but he's looking to literally complete four lots, which is enough to get him out of this, uh, this issue across the way and then be able to walk away from the whole thing. There's a pumping station he has to build at the cost of what, three hundred thousand, I think, Jim?
I think it's under that price.
Under that, but, uh, there's a road that has to be repaired and capped at, what, Jim, I, I don't know, or Peter Williams. Wha- what's the cost of capping that long road, uh, half a million?
Cap, uh, finish coating?
Yeah, Stone Gate.
Uh, it'd be much less than that.
Okay, um.
Maybe sixty to a hundred thousand.
Okay, so, um, we have no money in a bond because for whatever reason it was, the way it was done. And, um, he, he is the second owner on that. So, um, before we'll even talk to him, there's some seventeen thousand that he'll have to pay in back taxes. There's the issue of putting together a bond to cover the pumping station as well as the tapping of the road. And, um, then he can come back to the board and negotiate, uh, what he wants to do with, with building a few more houses. Uh, the other one is Dyton Woods. Uh, Dyton Woods will only come back to us when he's ready to get some money released from what you're referring to, holding back some money. And he was the one that doesn't have a fence around his detention pond or didn't, hadn't mowed it. Uh, we found out about the issue this summer, we got him to mow it, he did an excellent job mowing it, but he hasn't put up his fence yet. Uh, at the cost of several thousand dollars, uh, he, he hasn't done it yet. But when he comes back and looking for the release of some money is the time that we can hold back the funds to say, no, we won't give you any money until you put the fence up. Or we can take some of that money that he would want released and put the fence up, uh, ourselves. So there is, uh, a, a process of getting some money at a particular time to, I, I don't want to, to take him to court. We're gonna spend all that money given to, to, to Gay and Gay at the cost of getting to put the fence up ourselves by not releasing the funds to him. So there, there's steps involved, there's mechanisms involved that get triggered. Um, we, when we put together a forty B, we, with, with, um, Marguerite, uh, through Gay and Gay, we cover every minute detail from stop signs to no parking signs to what kind of cabinets you can have. So that's how, how, how picky we get. When it comes to, I understand you're, you're saying trash about the board of health, we notify every department. And I gotta be honest with you, from the very first meeting, everybody shows up. From that, it dwindles down to the point where nobody shows up. So we sit there and put together all the conditions at what we think everybody wants. And at the very last meeting, we notify everybody again, one more time, we're ready to close the forty B. Do you wanna show up before we have no more input? Nobody shows up, so we have to sign the initial conditions that what we think the board of health has. And before everybody signs it, we send that forty B condition, uh, condition to every department and nobody comes back with that. We've read the list of three hundred conditions and we think it's acceptable. Either nobody reads it or we get no more input. So we think from the trash that we say is gonna be, they're gonna have trash pickup or they're gonna have dumpsters, we assume you've read it and are acceptable with it.
I haven't seen the document you're talking about.
Well, I don't know if you were selectmen at the time.
I haven't been to a zoning meeting since I was on the board between seven and ten, but I remember.
But can we just, shouldn't we make this, make the issue.
The, the, I think the one thing is.
The snow removal, the trash removal and all this, we're not, what things that they're doing.
The best thing, Bob, let me finish what I'm saying.
No, we're talking about services to the public.
Jesus, you're going on things that we.
The best thing that, the best thing that I think is just, is the safety.
No, we're talking about services to the public.
Bob, please let me finish what I was saying. The best thing that's gonna be, come out of this is if we have somebody in addition to Jim to help with the enforcement of everything that has to be enforced. Am I correct, Jim?
I, you know, I, I, I don't agree totally, Peter.
Okay.
And I'll tell you why. I'm not lax, one iota, and I have no problem telling anybody, no, you're not getting any more from the town of Dyton. You all know that, cause we've done it. The problem is that enforcement alone isn't gonna help when the phone call comes in from the taxpayer or he, or he probably can't get in.
But somebody's gonna need to aware of that, right?
But the, 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 the catch all isn't that someone drives around and checks if subdivisions are plowed or not. The catch all is, when he drives by it, if it isn't done, it gets done, end of story, okay?
Okay.
So, that's right.
Well, that needs to be in a bylaw that defines.
Well, that's why we're here, how can we fix this, right?
At what depth do we plow that, that street?
And, and no one's saying that you as a, as a zoning board are not doing your, your best and your job at the forty B. But, you know, in everybody's defense, no one not shows up because of any malicious intent, everybody's busy, we all got things to do. Now, we're saying, you know what, there are some problems, whether you intended them to be there or not is irrelevant. What can we do to fix it going forward? And if you have a project coming in for substantial change, fix it. Now's your time, you're holding the ace in the hole. You got across the street where you say, he has this and this and he has no money, fine, he wants to come and need something from us. Now is the time to say, this is what we want and we're not settling for any less.
Now is the time we're gonna fix it, absolutely. Well, I mean, you, you know that, that's the case, we've talked to you so many times about it. But I guess what I'm saying is, how, how many times have we put those, uh, no parking signs on, uh, Dyton Woods where the kids keep, or, or that neighbor across the street keeps, keeps tearing them down?
Right.
So, I mean, how many times can we try find somebody to say to you?
Well, that's when you have to choose your battles, I mean, yeah, that's when you have to choose your battles.
Well, that's what I'm saying to you, that's what you said to me, we gotta pick our battles.
Right, and, and, and I still till today feel that way. What I'm saying is there's some inherent basic taxpayer services that are not happening.
Right.
And I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel completely, but we need to address them. We need to address them.
There's, so just, you should ask Gay and Gay about this, they'll tell you the same thing on Marguerite. Um, if, if the town is going to plow private ways, um, overall, the town can't use public money to enhance private property. It's violation of the law. Um, but you can adopt a statute that allows you, doesn't require you, allows you to plow private ways. It's a specific statute about snow plowing in private ways. Um, so you would need to do that and you would also need to adopt a general bylaw relating to the requirement, if you're gonna find people, the requirement that they, for health and safety reasons, plow a private way. You always have the fallback, you always have the fallback in an emergency situation to do what you need to do. But those are the two overarching things from a general municipal point of view that you could do in addition to all the things that everybody around these tables do, does in all of their decisions on a regular basis.
And that's as simple as adopting a bylaw, right?
No, by law.
Tell me, tell me.
No, that's what I'm saying, them running it.
Two, two different things, uh, acceptance of a statute that allows you to plow private ways and then adoption of a bylaw requiring people to plow their own private ways. And if they don't like a sidewalk, you don't show your sidewalk, then you're gonna get fined.
I have one concern about five, doing private ways, let's just say they have a base coat and the manhole covers are sticking out.
No, I, no, there's risks, there's, right?
I know, but it's the town that is wanting, they tear it out.
You don't have to, just because you adopt the statute allowing you to pro, plow a private way does not mean you have to.
Now, just to narrow this stuff a little, we're just stating, we make, we make this law.
But you gotta, you gotta go to town meeting and do it.
But if we do damage to a subdivision, what we did, we had to be told to do it as a town.
Yeah, well, no, but because you're doing it, you're gonna, overarching, you're not gonna just do it for the heck of doing it. You're doing it so that there's public access for health and safety reasons. So there's exemptions under the state laws relating to that kind of damage.
My question to you is if a petitioner comes to us, like you was talking about this one across the street, he reopens or asks or it doesn't even necessarily be this, if a petitioner wants to reopen a public hearing, is it, are we to only address the issues that he has presented, he wants relief on? Or can we go back and condition, recondition our snow removal part of the negotiations or not? Because it's reopened, it's, cause we can't petition ourselves, petitioner has to.
Depends on what we. No, right, so in a forty B, it's entirely different as well. So, um, uh, under a comprehensive permit, typically if somebody seeks to modify it, which is what they're doing,
Right.
the law says that when you're modifying something, you're only allowed to yea or nay the, the particular modification. But it, it, but it's a whole negotiation.[1774.34]
We, we have snow removal as part of a comprehensive permits already. We don't have a fine in there.
Well, you, right, you can't.
Right.
Right.
So we have in there, if they don't do it, the town's going to do it, um and, and bill them for it. So I understand what Bob is saying, but we don't say if the town has to do it, all it says is, we're going to bill you for that, which is what we did when, when they didn't do Dyton Woods. But it didn't say at four inches, which is what Jim is trying to say, um it just said, we're gonna go in and plow if you don't do it. So it doesn't help Jim, it doesn't help us the very, it, it, it covers what Bob is saying, no, it doesn't.
It doesn't help anyone, we need, we need something that's automatic.
But the bylaw can do that, but in the meantime, the health and safety card trumps everything.
Right, so.
There you go.
I mean, so if Tommy goes in there and something gets torn up, uh, you know.
So can a letter, a letter be sent to these developers now, on behalf from the selectmen or the Board of Health?
I'm concerned about our improvement as well.
I agree, I agree.
Can a letter be sent to these developers, it's from the forty B and probably the subdivisions, I guess? Saying, look, at, at, at the height of four inches, the town is gonna come in and, and, and plow and, and, and you're going to get billed for it. Or, excuse me, or you're going to have to do it at four inches.
Um, town really needs to adopt a bylaw to do that.
It has to adopt a bylaw.
Yeah.
Right.
And it can only be done at the annual town meeting.
Or special, whatever, any, any town meeting.
And I don't think this is, this is um a futile attempt because I don't think this is gonna go away.
No.
After developers gone, in some cases, the association's responsible.
Right.
And I have my reservations about the associations.
Right.
So the same thing can happen, we're talking about a private contractor who's subject to uh the economy, if someone else is paying more than that subdivision's paying. The other one's gonna get done first, and that means we're gonna be in the same boat we're in today. So something needs to be done, so we have a long-term fix on this.
And it's not just snowplowing, I'm talking anything else.
No, just, just, just to deal with immediate, uh immediate issues because the bylaw and the statute, obviously, that's not tonight. But certainly, uh we can get something together for town meeting to do that. If you give us a list of the, the developments that have private roads that haven't been accepted. Board of Select and Board of Health can certainly send a letter telling them, this letter is to advise you that, okay? Your road's not plowed at minimum of four inches when the fall is at four, the town of Dyton will begin to plow and you will be charged for it and this is a public safety issue. We must have access to those roads for fire and police and everything else, so, so we can do that. And the long term is get the bylaw passed, get, accept the statute. Trash, all I will say to you is, if you've got problems out there with dumpsters or not being either maintained or emptied, just file a complaint, call the Board of Health, all right? We will send an inspector out and we will take action. The other thing that we're looking at right now um is permitting private dumpsters. Which means each dumpster, each hauler will pay a permit fee to come into this town and drop their own dumpster, okay? A lot of communities do this, and the reason they do it is because it's a way to control and hopefully manage solid waste, okay? A lot of the stuff heads right down to C Mass because when Brett and Mr. Ferry and I went there. Uh the private dumpster companies that have, you know, the bins out there all over the place. They just pick them up and they're cottoning them down to C Mass because that's part of the load that they're assured for generating power. But most of the communities who allow private haulers to come in with their own dumpsters assess a fee for it. You can do it by the hauler, you can do it by the bin, okay? I'm talking about trash. But in the meantime, until we can get the regulations for that in place. If you hear that trash is not being handled properly in a development somewhere, just call the Board of Health because we will do something about it, okay?
Nancy, how do they manage those single smaller dumpsters? Everything's in there, trash, recycled.
When it goes down to C Mass, it goes through the. Uh, the single stream, yeah, yeah, we actually got to see the whole process. And big tractor trailer loads, I mean, those humongous things that like haul yards and yards of gravel, uh they come in loaded with trash.
Separates a household trash?
Um, well, th- those particular things, those tractor trailers, like they use for hauling gravel, they come in full of trash, they go to a certain spot. And they just dump it and it goes, when, when it's all done, it's finer than cigarette butt ash. What's left over after the combustion is taking place. But in the meantime, all sorts of stuff, because we even saw what gets, uh, what gets taken out.
Yeah.
But even the small things like a coin that might make it through the, the, the filtering, doesn't make it through combustion. But um, so the whole thing is, um, most communities regulate those and certainly in subdivisions. Uh, if they're not being maintained properly, they're not being emptied, they're not, they're in places they shouldn't be. You have rules that say the dumpsters will be located here, uh or they're leaving them, you know, the residents throw their bags of trash in there and all the other stuff. They're leaving covers open, they're not secured, look at what happened in Ton, okay? So there are all those kind of rules that relate to private dumpsters.
We spent, we spent days just discussing dumpsters.
Yeah.
You know, it had to be picked up at a certain time, the desert, the residents couldn't allow, um, you know, couldn't dump a mattress there. Couldn't dump anything lodged there, then it has to be picked up. I think you were even part of a working session where we just, going, maybe, going over all these little things, I think you were there, right? I mean, I don't wanna get hung up on it, but.
We're getting off subject here.
Yeah, I mean, what else is it that besides trash and, and?
Somebody who has small dumps in the yard, don't have to buy the bags, doesn't have that trash people pick it up, why are we gonna charge them to get a permit? Really, I mean, they're taxpayers, they've on their own set, I don't wanna buy the bag and have to pick it up.
Because, wait a minute, wait a minute. The key is you're a resident of the town of Dyton. When DEP or EPA or any other agency looks at a community, they look at the total amount of solid waste generated in a community. They don't just say, well, how much is picked up by the town at the curbside? How much is in bags, all right, how much is in recycling? Solid waste is solid waste, the goal of the governor and everyone else is reduce the amount of solid waste.
Are they gonna? Are they gonna? Is the EPA billing us?
It's not a matter of billing us.
Then why do we have to pay for a three dumpster on your own property?
Because it's how you regulate solid waste and trash collection.
When they, when you still own a bag, if you bought the Dyton Town bag, you're still.
Well, I'm not saying you're gonna buy a Dyton bag if you have your own dumpster, but I'm saying to you.
But you're gonna get taxed on it, cause you're gonna charge the person that does it, it's gonna be passed on to the consumer right along, all the way down the line.
It depends, the fact of the matter is, as I said, towns are responsible for the amount of waste they generate, they don't care if you.
Are they ta, are they billing you, are they billing the town, where they're responsible, they're responsible to them.
So what goes, when they get rid of the dumpster, heck, you know, dumpster, do they keep records of what town it's coming from?
They know how much trash is coming in and where it comes from because if there's any contamination, if there's any contamination, which is another thing we're gonna be working on, okay?
I don't understand Nancy, they can tell how much they're generating, but are they taxing us on this? Why does the town have to levy a tax against the hauler who's gonna pass it on to the consumer?
It's not a tax, it's a permit fee.
A permit fee, okay, let's call it.
Well, the homeowner's gonna pay the permit fee, right?
Yeah, he's, he's, he's gonna pass it on to you.
That's gonna be a yearly permit?
The, the fact of the matter is, most of the communities.
This is crazy.
Okay, hold on, time off.
I can offer this.
This, this will come up in a later debate, okay? Please, let's stay on track. Um, while we're talking about trash though, I'd like to have some consensus that, uh we've had incidences where uh the two ladies sitting over here, um. Heidi and Rosalyn have had to field many phone calls from residents about not getting their trash picked up, trash brought out to the roadside. We caused an issue where we have accumulation of trash on main roads. Can, our trash hauler, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is willing to drive in subdivisions, once there's a resident living there, to pick up their trash curbside. All he wants is to have an agreement between him and the developer, holding harmless, because it is still a private road.
Right, so again, you, you have to have that, particularly for the trash hauler. So you actually have to have a license agreement or an easement granted to the town of the trash hauler, depending on who's doing it, to allow the trash hauler to enter into the, on the private property.
So I'm asking you, your two entities to make sure that's written into your permits from now on, so we don't have all the problems behind the scenes of, how do we get this done?
So that doesn't have to be a, a bylaw, it can just be a condition?
No, you can write it into the decisions.
We can have Marguerite do that, or is it the Board of Health that you want?
Jim, wouldn't that be just an, uh, a paper that you, you know, people would sign as you issue the, the occupancy permit?
I believe so, but I'm, but no, 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 it's not.
No, 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 because you, because the, the homeowner doesn't own the road, the road is owned by the developer, so the person who gives the permission is the developer.
Right. Right.
Well Nancy, is that something you want the Board of Health to do now from what's in there, what the towns are right now, if, if, if you're telling me the Board of Health covers trash?
What I'm saying is, whatever you write into your agreement, it's gotta be enforceable.
Going forward, right.
Now, if your agreements that you generate cover trash, but they're not, and it's not being enforced because the trash is not being. You spell out where the trash has to be put, whether the, uh, Boiter Brothers goes in and picks it up with an agreement or whether they bring it out to a, whatever. Are they using dumpsters, okay? You've already covered that, what I'm talking about is, it's not being enforced because whatever reason, the enforcement part, we certainly can come under the Board of Health.
Okay.
Board of Health doesn't have to tell you what to write, cause you're already including it. But when the violation occurs, there's gotta be somebody that says, hold everything, all right?
I'll go back and look at each one.
So, what, that's why I'm saying, if you have developments where people are not following the conditions you wrote into those agreements.
What's waiting, already, okay?
Hopefully, whatever, if it's trash, yes, Board of Health can enforce it.
You mentioned above the roads, sending the, uh, developer a letter, telling them that, uh, at four inches, you, the town is gonna take on the responsibility of plowing after the four inches. Can you include that to, that any expenses that the town may incur as a result of that plowing?
Oh, they'll definitely, they'll definitely say that.
Damage is equipped and something's not responsible for property. Something's like, not be gonna rec, pull a plow right off the truck.
Oh, right, right, no, it'll be, when you give us a list of names, contacts, and the developer, whatever we need to get in touch with them. The letter can go out from the board and it will indicate, we'll say the four inches, that reasonable ton, or is it three inches?
Four is reasonable, they're on a chance to show up.
Okay, four inches and uh, uh, the town will do it because of safety issues, okay?
Definitely.
And that the, the developer, whoever's name is on that letter is gonna get billed for it.
Sanding as well, right?
Right.
As needed, yes.
Right.
Retaining.
Right.
And that's something that, as I said earlier, it's not gonna go away when the developers are gone, we're gonna revisit this down the road, I guarantee it.
The homeowners on the roads that aren't accepted, definitely, I agree with you.
Do we have any developments right now that are all completely done and are in the control of a homeowner's group?
Not only forty Bs, not forty Bs, we got one that's pretty close, none of the forty Bs, we have four actual forty Bs. That's, that's a debate for another day, I think, I don't, I don't see them working. I don't know if you have more experience in the rest part of the state, but I don't see an association working in this area.
Well, I mean, it, it's different in different areas, but they can work as long as the document is drafted in a way that it's supposed to be drafted and it's referred to in the deed. And, you know, with all due respect to the homeowners, it's their job to understand what they're buying, what their responsibilities are.
They're not being told, that's the problem.
So, well, well, they don't have to be, so it's both, okay?
It's a matter of due diligence of, of the buyer.
Right, it's, they're of record, they're of record, the decisions are, the decisions are of record, the decisions are part of their title. Um, and they know the homeowners association is there. So there are things that can be beefed up in homeowners association documents, depending on what they are, and they do work. You can require, for example, uh, the zoning board in a forty B and the sub, the planning board in a subdivision could require that as part of the establishment in the subdivision. Um, if there's gonna be homeowners association, it's funded upfront with a certain amount of money, not, you know, but a certain amount of money. So you can do those kinds of things, but you, with all due respect to the homeowners, they have some of their own due diligence they're supposed to take.
I agree with you.
And they're the ones that can actually hold the developers' feet to the fire as well, so that it's a team, it's not just the homeowners moving in and saying, well, woe is me. It's the town saying, we're, we've got your back, but you also have to have our back too, it's a team.
Mary, can I ask you a question, was your son told that there was a homeowners association required across the street? See, that's the problem, we have a developer across the street who is, I'm gonna call him a hat. Um, and we just found out through a process that I don't wanna have to repeat, that he's not telling, he didn't tell any of the homeowners that there was a home.
The homeowners association should be of record.
He didn't tell any one of them.
Doesn't, that, he doesn't have to tell them.
The town gets in the room.
They're, it's of record, that means when they have their title done to buy their house, it's, it's right there with their deed.
Right, nonsense.
It's supposed to be recorded.
They didn't, they were not, okay, so verbally they were not aware, but when they signed the documents, I, I'm, I'm going to guess, they didn't know what they were signing.
Well, that, well.
So if the homeowners, homeowners fault.
You're biggest investment of your life, yeah, I didn't know what you're signing.
Yes, uh, I, I know, so, I think that's why Jim is saying, I don't think that it's gonna work around here because people who were bought in what these were not told.
With all due respect.
And all of a sudden, they're gonna be told, wait, you gotta put this stuff together.
And Lisa, I, I truly respect what you're saying, and you're an attorney and I'm sure you read every word. The problem is that in New England, they're not prevalent, especially when you're talking about standalone buildings. In condos, sure, they've been around for a long time.
Well, there, there are a lot of, a lot of, a lot of planning boards, and Peter can record, I mean, he represents a number of, of towns too. A lot of planning boards use homeowners associations to make sure that there are amenities that are taken care of, so that the community doesn't actually have to take care of them. So, and again, I'm not, there are ways, you can decide, you, you all can decide as a policy that you're not going to have them, that's up to you. But that puts more of a burden on the community.
It does, but ultimately, we're gonna be the one who has to deal with it anyway, if the association doesn't, we have communal septic systems.
Well, no, not, no.
If that fails, that's gonna be a huge public health hazard, we will have to intervene.
Well, there, but those are also DEP controlled, so.
Right, some, right.
So those are DEP controlled and most of those should all have bonds that go with them, they don't, DEP does not allow those to be approved without bonds. So it's not true that that's gonna happen, in fact, DEP won't approve a communal septic system without a bond cert, in a certification, so.
I have one subdivision who's trying to remove the DEP oversight from it because he claims the flow is under the DEP statute.
Well.
And I refuse to give him any more permits, cause I'm not, unless I get something from DEP, which I will then bring to the selectmen and say, we don't wanna side on this.
Right. So the, the level on that is the Board of Health, depending on the size of the septic system, it's either Board of Health oversight or DEP oversight. But there's continuous oversight on those septic systems. Um, but the town is a policy, you, you all can get together and decide, we're not gonna have any homeowners associations. But there are ramifications to that, ramifications that the, the planning board's gonna have to deal with, ramifications that the zoning board's gonna have to deal with and draft into their decisions. And that the Board of Selectmen and taxpayers are gonna have to deal with. Your subdivisions will look a particular way or not a particular way, or your developments will, without homeowners associations. In a forty B, in particular, in a forty B, because they do not have to build them to town standards. There's lights, there's trash, there's water, there's sewer, there's roads, that are not built to town standards. Does the town want to take on the continuing obligation of maintaining roads that are not built to town standards? Not just for plowing, but then reconstruction and maintenance down the road. If you do, as a town, that's a decision everybody should make with their eyes wide open. Otherwise, the, the, the forty B developer has to establish a homeowners association to take care of that development and to collect fees on an ongoing basis. Part of the title of when you buy into it, just like a condominium association, you're gonna pay a homeowners association fee every month. You can do everything that you want, but everybody under, needs to understand what the ramifications are for the community in the long run for maintenance of these entities.
We'll have to see how it plays out with.
Can I just say one thing on that, I think, I think Lisa, you, you misspoke on one thing that the, the ZBA has in its efforts ensured that the roads and the drainage systems have been built to town standards.
Oh, even, even the, in the forty B issue, you're gonna do that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, so that's good, so it's good.
It is so.
But it's not always, I mean, so, yeah, that's a big deal.
I'm just saying, I, 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 I mean. This is why we bring him in, in addition to that.
That's a big deal.
I think the developer across the street is not collecting the twenty-five dollar homeowners fee yet because he didn't wanna tell everybody that is gonna be, is required homeowners.
Well, he's not a tell, I mean, really, it's.
I know, well, they haven't been.
It's not a tell issue, it's on record, it's.
No.
How much is part of the mortgage?
They actually depend, it's not part of the mortgage.
Well, the bank, the bank. The bank has their titles and they file.
Okay, well, hold, hold on, good, hold on.
You wanna get a gavel?
I don't, I, we haven't had a subdivision built, built through, we haven't had an association established yet.
Yeah, the title search. They have to tell.
So we can revisit this when and if it does, it happens, or does it happen? I just see, I see the writing on the wall that we're gonna revisit this down the road.
Well, the town, before that happens though, you all as a group, I mean, you're here working together, you all should decide. Because you, you know, they can't get an application, either board can't get an application, and then all of a sudden say, you know, in the middle of that process, oh, we're not gonna do these anymore. I mean, it, it, there needs to be some forethought to that.
Right. Well, we're not gonna hash it all out tonight, we're not gonna have a meeting and have a third.
No, I don't.
Going forward, can we, has a condition on a forty B require that there be some type of class for any person purchasing this that they were explained? That there is a homeowners association requirement and that someone has to be, you have to have a member of board, someone that. that there is a homeowners association requirement, and that someone has to, you have to have a member of board, someone that.
You can require a certification that they've, you know, explained, that they handed a document, yeah, you can re- you can require that.
Something that they, so that they really know that they can't go in and say, we didn't know.
Yeah, but whenever they buy into it, they, the attorney that does the title search, for those, each individual buyer, that's all there, so there's no reason to to do that, that's part of.
It's there, it's, it's.
It's there.
It's all there.
I can tell you, they're not being told.
It does, it's not a toll.
Some of them don't care. It's 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 not anything for them to be told, it's, it's.
They're, they're.
They have obligations to know.
They just wanna get into a new home for the first.
If you bought a home in a subdivision like that, wouldn't you want someone that you paid to protect your interest, tell you what you were getting into?
It's in their title.
But that's not the law in Massachusetts, the law has to.
It doesn't matter what the law is, it's common sense, it's tall, giving people what they should know. They they don't know that they're gonna be responsible for take care of the roads, take care of snowplow on our side, well.
Sure they do, it's on the record, and their attorney, and their closing.
Did you know any of that? I I, I'm sorry, not, I, I've, you gotta turn, I had to, I I, it was in my closing documents, there was, there was a sheet in there saying that that there will be a homeowners association, there will be fees associated, but I had to physically go search the registered deeds to find out.
But do you pay for that each month?
Oh, I, well, I'm here for a totally different reason, I I can't, we can't get a homeowners association as, to be established.
No, but I mean. But I mean, in your, in, that homeowners association thing, when you buy the house, it's set up at a certain price.
Supposed to be of record before you purchase it, before they sell, before they sell any homes.
Yeah, but, but doesn't the bank hold that money?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm I'm.
Because the bank doesn't wanna lean against their property, if the person that's living there isn't paying his homeowners association, he's gonna, the falls never will on the bank.
So the, the, the condition that can be added, the condition that can be added in, in both of the decisions that everybody writes,
There's no meaning.
They could, they, well, I.
No, no, there is no meaning.
is that if there's a homeowners association, if that's the way you decide to go, if there's a homeowners association, it has to be established and proof that it's recorded prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit of any building.
I was close. Yeah.
Because that way you know, that way you know it's of record before a sale occurs.
Yeah, my group writes those it up.
Yeah, and so that's, and these guys do too, so it it, they are supposed to be of record and proof, so the document goes to the building inspector before this first certificate of occupancy is issued.
But who do they pay the money to? If it's twenty-five dollars a month, who collects the money?
The homeowners association.
Association.
But if there is no homeowners association.
There is, though.
I know my son's never got charged for it, so.
Somebody's gotta be sent.
Yeah, but do they pay it before the development's completed?
Yeah.
I thought we had money in Ashbrook.
I thought the developer puts a certain amount of money.
Yeah, he does, he does, a certain amount.
I do, I do. Dyton Woods' septic system.
He he, he does, they, they put it, I don't remember which one it was, each one is different.
I don't think they pay it until the development is completed.
I know, I know that both boards on occasions have actually bonded some of these septic systems in addition to the D E bonds.
D E P.
We have separate bonds for.
Yes, yeah.
Planning board has has done that too.
For septic. I could cover it as best we can. Especially Dyton Woods, because they have that.
Yeah, that's why I started off by saying, no one's chastising anybody, we've done a great job, and we've evolved as each permit was issued.
Yeah.
But there were just some flaws that are still stickler, otherwise, he wouldn't have left home tonight, come down here to sit in on the meeting.
Commissioner, you think this is something that would be good to do like quarterly?
Absolutely, I I've, since I stepped foot.
I think we do nightly, Tom.
Since I stepped foot in this town.
I can, shoot.
Since I came to this town, I think everyone knows that I've tried to bring everyone together, so that we work in one voice. And the only way to do that is to get all the brass in one room like we're doing tonight.
Well, I think we all agree, it's a safety issue when it comes to the snow removal, or the the trash, if if it's not being done, the town has to step up and take care of it and then build it. If we have to find them, then find them, if we have to do the, do whatever it takes in the future permitting, put it in there.
So Nancy, which, I'm sorry, now, who's gonna come up with a warrant then, for the uh, June meeting, is it gonna be the board, it's not gonna contact the?
No, the Board of Selectmen will, will, I can see Brett, he's over there scribbling, writing, and I am too. Uh, we will look into getting a a sample bylaw that deals with what attorney me talked about, and also acceptance of the statute, the annual town meeting in June, okay, so, um, I'm looking at the clock, 'cause I know we gotta go upstairs pretty soon, so that that'll be the board, okay? We already talked about if there's violations of trash, whatever, call the Board of Health.
While you're saying trash, who's piling up the trash on one big pile on the little street?
The snowplow.
It was actually, uh, the subdivision.
I.
Okay, so, if there are.
It was nice.
They're coming in tonight, so.
If there are, if if there are trash issues, Board of Health, all right? Um, the snowplow thing we talked about tonight, and if you'll give us the names of those subdivisions that don't have accepted roads, they will get a letter, and they will be told, four inches, you either plow it, or you're gonna, we'll do it, and you get and build. And needless to say, if it keeps snowing, and there's another four inches, that's the next round, it's not gonna be one bill per storm, it's gonna be every four inches or as many passes as has to be made, and and then, just the other thing, if whoever has control of the money that relates to the Richmond Hill thing, whichever board it is that's planning, would you please do something about that, because we have tried everything, and when somebody comes and sits down in front of you and assures you, all right, that makes a feeble attempt, it's basically an insult, 'cause what they left, they mess.
We got the same story.
All right, so, let's not waste any more time, whoever's got control of the money, let's just tell them, we're gonna start, we're gonna take that money, we're gonna do as much as we can, and if you don't get the rest of this done, and the town has to do it, you're gonna be unhooked for the rest of the money, period.
I think that's, that's on the planning board to write that letter, and that that will be done.
Right. Because I think Richmond Hill has gotta be one of the oldest ones around, that has been in this state of limbo, or whatever it is. And and again, we've tried everything.
Been too long.
My, my impression, the last time they came before us, is Lisa was actually there, and Lisa brought up that we ha- we have your money, if you don't take care of it, we're gonna do it for you. And he just got up, good, and take it, and that's it, and he walked off, I don't know if you recall it.
Well, no, then he came back, he made, he came back and made all promises.
No, he came back in.
Yeah, same thing he said to the board.
But the promises, there's nothing behind them, so, so, I think once somebody gets notified, we're gonna take your money,
Right.
Right.
and we're gonna spend as much as we can to do as much as we can, and if we have to finish the project and the money runs out, we're gonna bill you for it.
I think what happened in this case here, that being thirteen years old, thirteen years ago, the prices of glue and those things was one thing, now it's another. So that eighteen thousand, the seventeen thousand dollars that's there, is not going to make it finish everything the way it's supposed to be.
Which is probably why we shouldn't wait so long going forward, and that's why we get.
So anyhow, I think, I think as far as tonight's meeting, I'm feeling good, because I think we've, we've talked about two major issues, snow removal, the trash thing, if it's, you know, not being done right, and if we can get something going on Richmond Hill, yeah, we got a lot of the stuff that needs attention. But I think this is, this is really good to get going on this.
I think I just spoke quietly with Peter here, and we think we're going to probably make them fence the ponds before first COs issued.
Yeah, that's fine, and I'll look for that.
So, that'll be a condition in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we meet again on, uh, the fourth Wednesday in May, three months?
That's predating the homeowner that bought that, that lot.
Maybe before the town meetings, we're all the same, pay for the bylaw.
No, no, 'cause he wants to pay for it.
Anybody, anybody hear that? Can we meet on the fourth Wednesday in May, so we can discuss the bylaw, because the meeting's probably gonna end the month, and it will probably be in June.
Oh, we're gonna talk about that tonight, by the way.
Does that work? Does that work?
Okay.
The fourth Wednesday event, I'll let you know.
Fourth, fourth Wednesday. Fourth Wednesday in May, fourth Wednesday.
There's no such thing.
Fourth Wednesday, if in May.
Hold on a minute.
No, that could.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Fourth Tuesday in May?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
When I was talking about third Wednesday.
Not Atlanta.
Are you talking about third Wednesday?
Third, we're the third.
Third, twenty-four, May twenty-four.
And we meet the first and the third, so it's gonna happen.
And they're the third.
Talking the third Wednesday.
Well, they're everywhere.
Well, Slightly said that the fourth Wednesday's too, too long.
Yeah, but now, any of these, the people want to be the third because we have irregular meetings.
That's fine, yeah.
Just come in here.
May seventeenth?
Everybody come to work.
Six o'clock? I took a huge pay cut, you know.
Thank you, everybody, for your attention, I appreciate it.
Okay, should write something.